Start the meeting, let's say, pledge allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, we call order roll call starting on my right.
Counselperson Jashner.
Counselperson Brenfire.
Mayor Jimmy John King. Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
Alright, we're looking for approval of the agenda. Anything extra?
We're good from staff.
Anything here? Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I carry. Look for approval of the regular meeting minutes of January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Carry none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I carry. That'll take us on to finance and budget. You've got the accounts payable listing with the additional listing there. If you have any questions, direct them to Finance Director Carlo, please. If there is no questions, I'd look for a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I carries. That'll take us right into motions of general business. And tonight under motions of general business, we have Mike Mobani here. We're gonna hear what he has to say and we're gonna have some questions to ask him, I hope. So Mike, if you wanna step up the podium.
Cheaters. Oops, what did I just do? Oh. Well, while I'm getting some technical help here, um, I've been asked to present to you a service that our firm provides, capital planning. So this is a sales pitch, so if at any point you guys know you're not interested, cut me off, okay, cuz I don't wanna waste your time. But I can't see the cursor. Oh, there it is.
Got it?
Does that say rental? Once I get them open, they'll be fine.
Yeah, that one and then the bottom one.
Alright. I think what I need is my prescriptions.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, um. There should be two to open. I just need one. Well, generally when cities are planning for large projects, capital improvements and so forth, engineers put together a capital improvement plan for you. But when you look at it, it's really not a plan, it's a list. It's a list of roads and purchases, you know, water tower, Jones Street, Franklin Avenue, whatever, two million, three million. And it doesn't give you any way how to pay for it, how to schedule it, how to size it. So there's one called rental comparable. It's like the third one from the bottom.
Part of this I've asked Mike to be here too because I'm looking for other ways to finance these projects, just like he's talking.
Yep.
Prior to our March tenth meeting, so we have, can have a good discussion there. Find some different ways that we can give some relief on these capital improvement projects.
There we go, thank you. So, um, what we do instead is something called capital financial, okay, no. Capital financial planning. So, instead, we like to reverse engineer your planning. So what we do is we ask the council, what kind of thresholds do you wanna set? We don't want our tax rate to go above X. We don't want our water and sewer bills to be higher than whatever it might be. Our debt levels, we wanna put a threshold on that. The inflationary cost on a typical resident, so if we look at their taxes and sewer and water bills over the course of a year, and then going into the next year, what's a reasonable amount of increase from year to year to year? And then based on those thresholds, now we start putting in projects. Can we hit those thresholds with a two million dollar project in two thousand twenty-five? The answer is yes, put it in the plan. Um, can we do four million dollars in two thousand and twenty-eight and still maintain those thresholds? If the answer is no, we gotta redo things. You know, that might mean downsizing the project, extending the term of the financing if financing is involved. Um, search for grants or put cash contribution. So anyways, we also wanna do this in an interactive way. So normally what would happen is you would say, okay, let's do these projects. I would come and present them to you saying, hey, you can do it this way, this way, this way, and then somebody throws curveball. What if we downgrade our special assessments? What if we change the way we do things here? Well, then I would normally have to take all that data back, rework the numbers, and then come back again. No, 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 we don't do it that way. We're gonna do it with graphs, with an input page, so you can shout out to me, change it to two thousand twenty-six, knock a million bucks off that project, uh, and so forth. And by the end of the process, what you have is a plan of these, you've got numbers, you've got a budget. So, two thousand and twenty-eight, you say you can afford three million dollars on a project, then we go to the engineer saying, you've got three million dollars to play with in twenty-eight. What's the best way for us to spend that money? As opposed to getting thirty million dollars worth of projects, which you know you can't do, and trying to fit it all in there, right? So, what we do, um, the first thing we do is a comparative analysis. And, uh, what I'm gonna show you is what we did for the small town, for the city of Renshaw, a town of four hundred people. And, well, I'm just gonna have to deal with the way it is. We look at a comparison of cities of roughly the same size, in the same geographic region. And the reason we do this is just to see how you stack up. So just real quickly, I'm gonna flip through these. So this is evaluation tab, and you can't see it, there's a way there. I'm not even bothered with it. But this one on the far right is the tax base of the city. So, city of Renshaw and the dark blue compared to the average of all the cities that they selected, they had a high amount of tax base. But if we looked at, um, what their tax levy was, um, you can see that they had much lower tax levy than, than the average city. So they had more tax base, lower levy. Yeah, I'm in, I'm seeing it. It's cutting off the bottom part of the pencil. There it is, I don't know what you did. Nope, you have it. Okay, so, on the left is local government aid, on the right is their levy. And usually when you see a city losing the local government aid, usually you see the levy on the right more, right? But in their case, they're not levying. And the reason we're doing this analysis is to find out where you're strong and where you're weak. So if we find out your tax rate's high and your utility rates are low, well then we're gonna try and lean more on utility rates for paying for projects and so forth, so that you don't lose your competitive edge. There's local tax rate. We break it out by city, and Renshaw had the lowest tax rate in the city, or of the group of cities. And we'll ask the city to select your comparison communities. I've been doing this twenty-three years now. I've, you know, I've, in southeast Minnesota, I've got dozens and dozens of clients. I kinda know who has high tax rates and who has this or that. I don't wanna be accused of selecting the cities and making you look better than you are just so we can get you to do projects, right? So I have you select the cities. I'm bringing my glasses next. So, um, this is not a comparative thing, but we did look at their unassigned fund balance in the general fund compared to their expenditures. You're probably aware that you always wanna keep at least six months' worth of reserves when possible. Um, in their case, they have over two years' worth of reserves. And so, one of the funding sources for a project, if we were to use cash, might be their general fund. Except for in their case, they're so small, two years' worth of reserves isn't even four hundred thousand dollars. So, in their case, I would tell them, not a good source for a project. But in Stewartville, if you have big dollars, that might be a different story. What's this? Oh, median household income, Renshaw was much higher than the average. In fact, they were the wealthiest community of the group. So here's the wealthiest community in the group with the lowest tax rate and a higher tax base. But it's not, it's not surprising to find out, this is debt per capita, just total debt by my population. It had very little debt. No wonder they asked me to come up and talk about how to pay for streets because they just hadn't been keeping up, right? They were getting by on the cheap. And here's the thing, good intentioned people think they're getting by on the cheap by putting things off, but what was a mill and overlay just became a full reconstruction because you let your road deteriorate further than it should have. So, um, there was gonna be some seismic shifts in the city of Renshaw. We look at water rates and sewer rates. You see their water rates were a little bit high, their sewer rates are about average. And, you know, every town builds differently, some build quarterly, some build monthly, some build per thousand gallons, some build per hundred cubic feet. Some include free gallons in the base rates, some do not. We take all that data from the comparison cities and we mash it up as if every city charged monthly the same way. And what would a hypothetical bill be for a five thousand gallon user, so we can cap, uh, compare apples to apples. So here we have a town with a low tax rate, slightly high water bill, but a very competitive sewer rate. And then if we look at the overall taxes, sewer and water bills paid by this community, Renshaw's total cost of services are much lower than the average, and in fact, they were almost the cheapest town to live in. Without fail, every town I've done this in, and there's been dozens, if there's people from the public there, somebody says, we've got the most expensive, well, in their case, water rates around, you're, you're charging me out a house and home. Did you know you had the lowest tax rate? Did you know, did you know that when we take it all into account, take a holistic look, you're the cheapest town around? Where are you gonna go? Right? Where are you gonna go for charging out a house and home if it's so bad? It happens in every town. So that's why we wanna take a holistic look. So we get this overall picture, um, before we get into the meat of this thing. And this is not rocket science, anybody can do this, but it's just something we, we throw in there. So if we get to the meat of the planning, I swear as I get older, technology decides to. What did I do? There we go. Alright, so, we're gonna do everything graphically, but unfortunately to drive graphs, I've gotta have an input page where input data. So we've got a convoluted spreadsheet, and over time, you will, if you decide to do this, you will get very comfortable with this. This top half is basically all generic, kind of general assumptions. You know, any kind of customization that we need, we'll, we'll throw that in there. Um, but down below here is the meat of it, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit more. So, here's, uh, let me just plug things here. They happen to not let me plug anything in?
You have to.
We don't have Excel.
We don't have Excel on this here, so use Free@office.com.
What, that thing?
Click on that. Maybe, hopefully.
It's gonna have to be signed in.
Oh.
Alright, I'll talk my way through it. Well, actually, that's, actually, that's not gonna work. Maybe someone else. Do you have an, uh, this account?
Cheryl has her own account.
Well, let me just, let me just talk my way through it. So basically, each column is a project. You'll notice I don't really name these things. We can name them if you want, Jones Street, Franklin Avenue, whatever you want, we can name them. The only reason I don't really like to do that is because, let's say we've got a project in two thousand and twenty-five, and we say Jones Street. The council will come two thousand and twenty-five, something happens, and now it's Franklin Avenue that's more important. I don't want people to feel locked in. We can name it, but whatever, I just tend to be generic. So, what we do is we plug in the price, the first number is the estimated cost of the project today. Then depending on when we do the project, if we do it five years out, it's gonna add inflation to that number. You know, automatically, and we can pick the inflation number you want, right up above here in the assumptions. I can plug in five percent inflation, ten percent inflation, whatever you want. It'll inflate the project. Are we issuing general obligation bonds? Are we using cash? If we are issuing debt, how many years are we gonna go out? What's the projected interest rate? It'll calculate the payment. Then, we don't necessarily have to borrow money for everything, it could be cash. If we are gonna use cash, uh, which funds are we gonna take it from? The water fund, the sewer fund, capital projects fund, you know, we can do that. And if we do have a debt payment, what's the revenue stream that we're going to use to pay for it? So, what happens is, is when I plug in, uh, a, a number here, is it really not gonna be? Um, it, it will kick the project in and then show you the graphs. So, for instance, here is the tax rate for Renshaw, in that forty percent range. It doesn't include town, it doesn't include school. The yellow portion of their tax rate is that associated with debt. And you can see they have very little debt, but once the debt is paid off, it goes away. And the greens is the portion of their levy associated with everything else, operations, snow plowing, police protection. Now, on the assumptions page, you'll see that I have the operational spending of the city going up at the same pace that the tax base is growing. And that's why the tax rate remains flat. However, we can use different assumptions. If you wanna be pessimistic and say, our spending is gonna outpace our tax base, you would see this tax rate.
I might be able to log in online if you could.
Jenny, can you see where I can find, where do I back out to get Cheryl's email address? Is that where?
Nope, that's email the code. I don't think you can.
Oh. We can't get Cheryl out of that.
Can't you put it underneath?
That's where I was gonna try to sign in, underneath and red.
Is it right now?
Oh, if you click on the person, maybe it'll switch users there.
That's cool.
Uh-uh.
That's me.
Uh-uh.
Yeah, I guess.
I was.
No, she does, that's our email password, that's what it does.
If we do this again, we'll break the screen and we'll use my laptop.
Yeah, I can't get in, have to chill out.
That's alright, I'm just gonna have to talk my way through it. Oh, yeah, that's good, yep. Okay, so I'll just use my cursor. So, if I was to change the tax base growth assumptions, um, let's say the tax base is growing slowly, but you're increasing your spending a lot. We'd see this, this tax rate going up like this instead of being flat. So going back to the, the thresholds, let's set thresholds. If they set their threshold with a tax rate of forty percent, then you could see based on the assumptions we're using, we can't do any, any more projects until out here. Um, but, we can also say if your tax base is growing faster than your spending, you would see the tax rate die, in which case it would create capacity more quickly. The only problem is, if you plan for projects based on growth, you issue the debt and then the growth doesn't occur, not even a he but Kimchi. So, I don't like to plan on, I'd rather be pessimistic than optimistic, but we generally use a flat to flat. So what happens is, when I plug these projects in, uh, we go to the tax rate page. If we're using taxes, you would see some red add into these tax rates and so forth. In the water fund, if we were going to add projects that were supported by water, we've got two graphs. Here's their five thousand gallon per user, um, bill. And here's the projected water reserves, and you can see that they are bleeding cash at the moment. But they have some well debt that goes off in about this time, in which case cash reserves. So we don't need to really adjust rates down, in fact, we could probably take on a water project out there. With their sewer fund, they're already sucking wind, they're losing cash if they don't adjust rates. Even if they don't add any projects, they're gonna run out of cash. Then we look at their debt per capita. Five thousand debt per capita is considered high, so as we add projects, there would be red columns added to the top of this. And, you know, we try to keep it under five thousand debt per capita whenever we can. Once you get over five thousand debt per capita, it's not the end of the world, but you'll start getting dinged on your interest rate, your credit rating could get knocked down a notch. Oh, this is their capital project fund, where they're putting some money away every year, you can track the cash reserves. So this is the screen that the public would be interested in. So what it's basically showing is, alright, so in two, in our base year, the house that we decide to use as our sample is paying so much in taxes, so much in sewer, so much water for the full year. If that was to increase by, in our case here, three percent, everything would track along this line. So as you can see, without adding any new projects or whatnot, you can see there's tons of room there to add stuff and pay for it. But, again, getting back to thresholds, set the thresholds, schedule the projects. So in the end, what we ended up doing is saying, okay, unlike maybe a more sophisticated, larger town where you have multiple debt issues coming offline, or TIF districts coming available, things like that, they had to agree to pay more. You either had to wait a number of years or just agree to pay more than you're paying today. And they said, well, we need to do this, so we'll agree to pay more. So I said, fine, how much more? They gave me that number, and we basically said, alright, so now our new normal's gonna be having a tax rate somewhere around fifty percent, fifty to fifty-five percent. So we said, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna issue bonds for our first project. We're gonna wait a couple of years, so it's gonna be a bump in the tax rate. Wait a few years, we're gonna issue another set of bonds before the first bonds are paid off. We're gonna issue another set, set of bonds, and they're gonna overlap. So now what's gonna happen is we got a bond issue for that first bond, you're gonna feel that. Then we're gonna have the second set kick in, but before the second set of bonds elbows the end of it, before the second one ends, this one ends. So you can add another bond here. So, you know, I mean, every few years, they're issuing debt, doing a project. And so, even though I can't play with this, I'm amazed with my graphic skills, you'll see that we have quarter million dollar projects, which I know to you is peanuts, but to them it was sizable. They're doing quarter million dollar projects about every three, three, four years. And use these arrows. Going out there. And, you know, we can do as many columns as you want, but this is just kinda showing how far out. We usually plan at least ten years, and generally we start with fifteen. And then what we did is we looked at their debt per capita, and they were hovering in this sort of moderate range with all that debt. And, when we tracked with this, there was a bump right away for that first bond issue, but then we tracked nicely with that three percent. So, we didn't go with the engineer's list of what roads to do. What we did is we scheduled as much project, as much cash as we could, to stay under those thresholds.
So Mike, are you doing these projects, when you're figuring the way you're doing it, are you doing these projects without assessments?
We can do it with or without.
But like a town like this, your shoulders, are they doing it without assessments?
We did do it with assessments in their case.
Yep.
Um, but there are some towns that don't. And that's another thing that I can show you, is like if we have assessments, don't have assessments, what's the impact? And, when I talk about financing projects, it's not just here to say, hey, let's work with Mike and get bonds issued. It might be using a different kind of borrowing. For instance, the USDA project, right? Um, they can provide forty-year financing for utility projects. And they can give you an interest rate in that term that I can't even come close to matching, so we can factor those things in. If your utility systems become too expensive, at some point, you can hit what they call affordability levels and potentially open yourselves up to grant possibilities as well.
Well, we've been doing assessment projects for many years, or Mike?
Have it, has it been just sort of ad hoc, or?
No, it's been seventy-five, twenty-five split, seventy-five, city, the assess part, be twenty-five percent. But between inflation and just the price of everything, the way it's going,
Yep.
it's getting to be a bigger and bigger bite every year on everybody.
Yep.
Looking for ways to soften the assessment part a little bit, I guess I'd say.
Yep.
You know, the city can take out a little more of the debt, ease up a little bit on the people. You hit a certain number, people are comfortable with, but you get to a,
Yep.
that next level, and they get pretty excited when your taxes are going up, your inflation's going up, and everything else.
Right. So, um, basically, there's a number of ways to, to deal with how much you need to assess. So you've probably heard to get statutory authority, you have to assess at least twenty percent.
Yep.
That's, that's something that you hear all the time. That's a very narrow definition of what, how you get the authority to issue debt. So let's say we have a million dollar road project, and we have to assess at least twenty percent, that's two hundred grand, right? Well, is it a road project, or is part of it a utility project? Right? We gotta tear up that road and put in sewer and water. So let's say five hundred thousand is sewer and water, and five hundred thousand is roads. So now, all of a sudden, our two hundred thousand dollar assessment is a hundred thousand. Because we can borrow money from the sewer and water intercepter authority. It'll be the same bond, you don't have to go to market twice. It's just that in the underlying documents, we say there's two pieces of authority being used, it's called bifurcation. Um, and then in terms of your policy, um, you know, you could say, we're gonna stick with the twenty-five percent like we always have. Um, but maybe you could cap it at what the last project was, plus add some sort of CPI index, so that if the twenty-five percent becomes indefensible. You know, cuz you can't exceed the benefit, right? So, if somebody's house isn't gonna be improved by five grand, you can't assess it five grand. So you could cap it, you know, it's twenty-five percent or capped at the, you know, the defendable.
Well, one thing I've been kind of visible with the staff, but if you got, we're seventy-five, twenty-five, except on the u, uh, utility hookups, the sewer and water hookups were fifty-fifty.
Yeah, don't like it.
Why can't we go seventy-five, twenty-five on them too?
I tell you this, how about we just lose all the, um, specificity in our policy and be a little more flexible? That simply says, for maintenance projects, we don't assess, you know, seal coating, that kind of stuff is inaccessible. For full reconstructs, we will assess based on benefit, not based on what's going in the ground, based on benefit. So, I hate when you say, we're gonna assess for this pipe, and then for this kind of curb, and for that piece of sidewalk, there's a benefit. And, um, you know, let's, let's talk about assessing for utilities. So, it's easy for people to understand why they're being assessed for roadways, cuz you can see it, I had a pothole written.
Exactly.
You know what I mean? But I had water before, I got water now, how is, how am I better off? How can I sell my house for more money based on that? So I'd rather just say, hey, we all know that a brand-new street out front makes your house more valuable than it was, whatever that is. We're gonna assess. And I do love the fact that you're an assessment town. It, just out of a matter of fairness, imagine if you have two exact properties on either end of town. The same in every way, same house, same neighbors. They're both for sale, the only difference is, one road is crappy, and the other road recently got redid by the city. The guy who got lucky to have his house, his road done, is gonna get to sell his house for five to ten grand more than the guy with the crappy street, and he gets to walk away with that money. The point is with the special assessment, now they're gonna end up with the same kind of sales price, that, that's why you do it. So I love the fact that you're doing it, but yeah, you've gotta keep the, the, um, reasonability of the, the policy in mind. So I, I would suggest maybe a more, you might say twenty-five percent of allocated roadway costs, un, not assessing for sewer and water. And that way, we're allowed to bifurcate between sewer and water authority and, and road authority. So it'll only be twenty-five percent of basically real road work.
Yeah.
You know, as opposed to everything. Uh, so that would be a way to help drive it down.
Is that kinda the way we're doing our annual bill?
Yep, with the street guys.
Yeah, but I mean, on the sewer and water cost, that.
Oh, that's the fifty-fifty.
Okay.
Services.
Services, right, the sewer and water part's coming out of our.
The actual mains are coming out of our utility.
Right, the mains were taken care of, the services will be charged fifty-fifty.
So what we have to look at, though, with all of this is the balance. So, when we do a reconstruct, yeah, we charge services fifty-fifty. If the city started taking on more of that, or all of that, and getting the services in there, under the water and sewer, now we need to reevaluate rates. And our water and sewer rates might have to go up in order to handle all of that
Right.
cost, so that we can still have enough in case an emergency happens at the wastewater treatment plant or the upbringing's going to.
Well, but some of the cost, as Mike was saying, could be paid with cash, and we're, we're, we have cash. We've been paying taxes and, and putting money away for years.
Yes, but can we pro, can we keep that going for everyone as we keep going with the projects?
Well, what I was looking at, it ended up off to a ton of money that time, about, what, seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars. You know?
Well.
And if you gotta have six months, which I know is the state statute, they're like you'd have a certain amount in there, we've got plenty in there.
Yeah, and, and to Jenny's point, though, what you're saying is true whether we assess for those services or not. It's just a matter of which pile of money.
Yep.
So, if we reduce our assessment level, for every dollar, we reduce an assessment, a dollar has to come from somewhere else.
Yeah.
And you're suggesting, well, then we have to worry about sewer and water rates. Well, if we don't worry, if we don't, then we put it on taxes. Either way, that dollar's gotta come from somewhere. So you're making the cognizant, this decision that the. So you're making the cognizant deci- decision that the whole city is picking up a greater share of these, these projects than, than what they did before.
Correct.
So not only do you, could you just bifurcate to get control of that twenty-five percent number, you can also look at the cost of the road themselves, and be a little more creative, and you're thinking like, okay, blacktop, that's a road cost, right? Is it? You gotta dig through the blacktop, get to the pipe, and then you gotta put the blacktop back to protect the pipe, that's utility cost. Or it could be, if you're so, you're so inclined to define it that way, right? So we can allocate costs between water and sewer versus roads, so that that twenty-five percent, that percentage, as, as a percentage of the overall project, that twenty-five percent might become, you know, fourteen, might be ten. The only thing I would caution is that anything that we do that drives that percentage down, we have to look at the, the resulting assessments on folks, and make sure that it's fair to the folks that have been assessed already. So, we would probably have to look at the last assessment roll, and then add some sort of consumer, you know, inflation to that number.
I'm not trying to get this done for nothing, Mike, that's the point. It's, it's been pretty, it's been an increase every time, like Jenna said, it's just an inflationary increase and everything else.
Yup.
But it's been a, it's been a tolerable number for fourteen years. It's been in that five to seven, maybe an eight thousand dollar range. Now I'm starting to pump into tens and elevens and twelves again. You know?
Yup.
When I had mine done fourteen, fifteen years ago, or whatever it's been now, if we wouldn't, let me put it this way, the reason I got elected is because I was suing the city over assessments.
Okay.
And we reversed it from the time it was twenty-five, seventy-five at that time, wasn't it, Bill, seventy-five to the homeowner, twenty-five to the city?
Fifty-fifty.
It was fifty-fifty, I remember that.
I was looking at an assessment at that time, fourteen years ago, around fourteen, fifteen thousand.
Yup.
And with the reversal and everything else, it got changed to about seven, six.
Actually, your, your Stewartville's policy change had a ripple effect across the entire region.
Yeah.
Everybody about that time started relooking at their assessment policies because of that.
Well, it was because we were running into them times, just what you said, it wasn't proving the value to the homeowner anymore. It was getting to the point, it just wasn't working.
Yup.
You had to do something. If we wanted to change it, we'd be at forty and fifty thousand dollar assessments right now.
Dodge Center, uh, had a fifty-fifty policy, I think they, they may even still, but they capped it at like a certain dollar per foot. So regardless of the policy, it would not exceed some number.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean? Um, and I can see that, especially in today's, because these road projects are coming in so much higher than what they had in the past, right? Because of inflation, so.
I'm not trying to get anything done for free for anybody, I'm trying to get this policy switched again towards
Yup.
maybe will be manageable for another ten years again.
Because it doesn't really matter what the policy says, you can, you cannot assess more than the benefit. Regardless of what the policy says. So, you know, making the policy more flexible so that we can hit that, um, makes a lot of sense to me, but. Okay, uh, so, in terms of planning for projects and so forth, the, the process usually is, is it takes a good couple of months at least to even put this together. Then I, once I have it together, I'll probably have a staff level meeting first, one or two of you are welcome to attend, it's not to not show it to the council, but I'm going through it to make sure, are there any errors? Am I giving you the information you want? Is there something else that you want me to customize to Stewartville, that kind of thing? Once I get through that, then we schedule a work session with council, and it has to be a special session, um, or at least I would request it, because it will be an hour and a half to two hours, easy, it just will be. Then by the end of the night, the hope is to have a consensus on how we fill in these columns. That doesn't mean you've committed to any of it, right? All it means is, we've got some budgeted numbers, and if we say we've got three million dollars for two thousand twenty-five, come two thousand and twenty-five, we take a look at reality compared to what we thought we would be dealing with. If we're close, then yeah, pull the trigger, do the project. If we're off, we come back and we do an update, we do another work session, we put it back on the wall. Maybe local government gets cut sometime between now and your next project. That's gonna change things, right? Put it back on the wall, let's have a, let's have an update session. So, um, did I put a proposal in for this?
You gave, you just gave me an estimate.
Yup, no, it's not an estimate, it's a fee, it's a lump fee, it's five grand, um, one-time fee. If we're named as your municipal advisor, every time you wanna do an update, I don't charge. If, uh, we are not going to be your municipal advisor, meaning, um, you're issuing debt through other folks, that's fine. I'll just have to quote on an ad hoc basis, it'd probably be about a grand every time. But, um, that's it in a nutshell. So, any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yup.
So, how recent was this data? Was this at, at the tail end of two thousand twenty-two, or was this sometime in July, August?
This one here?
Yes.
Oh, in Renshaw, I did this one in two thousand and nineteen, we did an update in twenty-two.
Uh, yeah, when in twenty-two, what I'm trying to ask.
What happened in twenty-two?
I, I am asking, when in twenty-two did you read?
It was mid-year, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Is it possible that the numbers could have changed due to changes in the economy?
Oh, absolutely, so those are the kinds of, those would be the kinds of reasons that you would do an update. Is something unforeseen kind of happened? Now, some cities do this annually, Chatfield does this annually, Lake City does this annually, not the council, they do it at the public utilities level. St. Charles does it annually. Spring Valley does it once every few years, Dodge Center is once every couple of years. Uh, Hayfield, I think I've done one update with them so far. Orinoco, we did one big update because of that huge project they're doing now. So, I mean, every city's different on how often they do it, so.
My next question was gonna be like, all right, so who all collects the data, so that way it all gets, it's all active, it's all.
So, the, it comes from a couple of different sources. Uh, my office will put it together, and the city's welcome to have any input they want in it. Um, but the comparative data, most of it's coming online from Department of Rev- Revenue, um, or US Census Bureau, uh, thinking Minnesota cities. Then the sewer and water data, unfortunately, I have to go right to those communities and ask, because that, a lot of cities don't just post that on the web, so I have to call and ask what their water rates and sewer rates are, that kind of thing. The financial data that's in behind the scenes to help calculate future tax rates and the, and project sewer and water reserves, I'm grabbing that from your audits, I'm looking at your financial statements, I'm taking that actual activity. I can show you that.
So I actually make what you're saying is, not only would this help us figure a little bit on these projects, it'd help figuring it budget time and everything else. We'd have a little better idea of what's going on.
Yup.
Yup, and it would also help for, you know, a lot of these grant sources or other sources for funding. If we're looking at federal funding, we're appointing for twenty-seven dollars for twenty-twenty-seven right now. So to really know what our need is, what, what's there, um, maybe we could do a bigger project that we weren't going to be able to do if we were to get the federal funding grants available.
Sure.
Um, and it helps, helps us to know what to apply for, and what to go looking for ahead of time, because it is, you know, three to five years out that those funding sources are getting appropriated.
Yeah. So, the, I usually don't get into it with the council, but there's a bunch of spreadsheets in the background. And so what I'll do is the first few years, like up until this line, that's all gonna be data pulled right from the audits, and then from there, we make projections going forward.
Sure.
And so, um, you know, are the projections reasonable? Yes. Are the projections going to be wrong? Yes. Because we'll never nail it. We're just trying to be as reasonable as we can on, on the projections. So, um, I don't know if there's anything else for me to add on this. When you have the work session, some cities like to do it, some cities don't, but if you want the public involved, doesn't bother me. I've done it for like empty rooms, and I've done it for two hundred people, it don't matter. Sometimes it's helpful to have the two hundred people, because if you have a contentious project. In the city of Edgerton, over on the border of South Dakota, raising taxes big time, we're gonna be talking about raising their utility rates big time. We were in the gymnasium at the school, and by doing it that way, they actually got a lot of buy-in from the community. They haven't yet done the projects, but everybody now knows it's coming and why it's coming. In Chatfield, it was interesting, they had like a million bucks in their utility fund. And I'm, I'm telling them to raise their rates, and they're like, can you come explain why a city would raise rates when you're sitting on a million dollar cash? Yeah, I will. Because when we took into account the upcoming projects, it's gonna add debt payments, and the cash outlay that the fund is going to need for these scheduled projects, and it doesn't just have to be financed, it can be cash. We'll project the reserves, and we see that million dollars going. Now, wouldn't you rather do two or three or four or five percent every year in your rates, instead of going and then raise it fifty percent on your rates like, like that? I would not wanna be in this office when you raise rates that much in one, one school, right? So that kind of stuff helps smooth things out for the public if they choose to attend.
One more question I have for you is, if we were to adopt something like this, or this specifically, how would this affect those in lower-income housing in the city? Like, say, with the trailer cars.
So, that gets to that one graph where I'm tracking the impact on a house. And we can change the value of the home. So, for instance, in Renshaw here, we started with a hu- a hu- a house that was valued at a hundred fifty grand, and we had it going up at three percent a year in value, but one particular year, we had it go up twelve percent, just because they had an oddball assessment valuation year. So if we wanted to know what the impact would be on a fifty thousand dollar, you know, rental mobile unit or something like that, we have that ability, so. Or if we wanna change the, the usage, it's not five thousand gallons, maybe you want thirty-five hundred, that's all stuff we can customize. But it's more just to give you a gist. And what it's gonna suggest, so, well, I wasn't able to plug it in, but basically with, oops, done, gone. You can see these red numbers here, I had a, I was gonna plug in a two percent rate increase in sewer every year to take care of this business. And if, if I was able to enter the data, you would have seen the two percent a year going up on race in red, and then you would have seen their cash reserves stabilize. So if you're, let's say, let's, talk about thresholds. Mike, we never want to dip below five hundred thousand dollars in our sewer fund, okay? If we got a project and we can't do it, then either we gotta rely on some other revenue stream, or do something different. Now, these are, you can have multiple thresholds. But again, it's, it's, that's why we call it capital financial planning, we're planning to a number, and we're agenda to spend it.
And maybe you guys won't, like, get so frustrated when I say that something's gonna cost, because we'll work together to make it, to find out.
No, I see a real bad, you're just like, you, you need an answer tonight, Bill, or what's the deal?
I do not. In fact, I will take your leave if you wanna discuss it. And the example I always give is the city of Hinckley, well, they do it annually, Hinckley does it annually. I showed Kyle this service, I think, one year, we did like a training session somewhere in Hinken, and it was two years later. You can still do that? Yup, same price. So, if it doesn't, if it's not for you this year, it's gonna be here next year, the year after, right? So.
Good question, I just thought of it, uh, how much do this servant, how much does this service cost?
Five thousand dollars per resident. No, no, no!
I'll put these errors and write it down, so I gotta.
It's five thousand dollars.
Alright.
Thank you.
Pleasant western block area.
I saw that penny go quick, I'm like, oh my god.
Yeah, with what you talked about as maybe a goal, before we get to that final public hearing in October, November, the sooner we get started, and in a couple of months, if Mike's able to come back, you've still got a couple of months to work with these parameters, or the different thresholds, or the different units we wanna look at for the future.
Well, I'm, I'm sold, I don't know about the rest of the guys, what do you think, Eric?
Oh, I, I like it, I'd like to see what our, our data looks like, you know, with our own numbers in it, and.
The other thing I think that's helpful is, if we ever were having to go to court on that defensible, it shows the courts that you have done analysis to try to keep this fair for property owners.
And then, and then, e- even when it comes time, when we, when we look at, you know, future projects, just being able to use that as an extra, you know, point of reference for prioritization to.
It's great, what you're asking.
I think it's a good deal for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, being able to compare Stewartville against area towns and towns similar to us, to see where we're at.
Yup.
I'd make a motion right now to hire Mike for five thousand dollars.
Let's talk area.
You got a second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The polls?
Very good, that's good enough for me, we don't do contracts, so if at any point you change, decide to change your mind, just say, quit work, and you won't get a bill, alright? Alright?
It's gonna start tomorrow, right?
The first thing that's gonna happen is, somebody's gonna get a list of items that, and they even like it.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll hear your needs.
Great. You'll probably need to get my USA.
I was gonna say, my, my two cents, my portion of it, is I think it's gonna be an awesome tool that we have to go for. Like Jenna said, we got, we have the ability then to plan, we can look at the grants, we can look at those things. But we're very transparent to the whole community then, on what we're doing, why we're doing it, what we're trying to do. And then it's not, I don't think you have as many questions that come through, and if you do have those questions, you have the backup, you have everything that they need right at your fingertips, and you can show how we've done with due diligence. We are planning for this, we really want the best for the community, and we're planning that way.
Make sure to close those down.
Okay.
Yeah, in Chatfield, they did a referendum for the swimming pool, and we had already put together our plan, our threshold, we had our stuff lined up. And basically, we held a session, and we kinda let everyone know, we are not going to deviate. The roads need to be done, right? We're not gonna deviate from the plan if the pool gets approved, so we were showing it with and without the pool. And just let people know that if we get the pool, you know, this was the normal. Once we do the roads, you know, let's say it's the tax rate, this is the normal, if we do the pool, this is the normal, and that's where we're gonna be. So, um, we can customize for, I know you already approved it, so I guess I can quit selling, but the idea is, it'll serve your needs, so.
We're going to serve you.
Alright, anything else? I'll take my leave.
Nope, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Always been satisfied with the work you've done for us, thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day, the flowers are in the mail.
Thanks, Mike.
How are you?
Alright, that takes a lot of emotions during business, takes mayor's staff, it's all reports. The mayor's report. City of Stewartville, like to send our sympathies to the families of Linda McLaughlin, Gerald King, Maxine Stroud, Monica Siffsted, Ruth Klon, Gary Boesman, Brett Bjorm, Bel Reid, and Lloyd E. Vagan. We don't know, send our congratulations out to David Hildebrandt, he received this year's Chambers Volunteer Award for two thousand twenty-two. And we all appreciate David, he does a lot for everyone, everyone around here, he has a can-do attitude that he even helps provide all the time. Don't forget, this Saturday, February eighteenth, at eight in the morning till ten-thirty, is FFA Community Breakfast. They used to call it the farmer's, the farmer's shared breakfast. It's only a buck, you get eggs, you get pancakes, you get juice, you get coffee, you get milk, you get sausage. That's what the meal like that, wherever you go, that's the profit the farmer makes out of all that, is a buck. So go support your FFA and your farmers. He says no. Boys' Count Two Fifty-Six will be holding their chili and soup feed on Saturday, March fifth. Oops, excuse me, Sunday, March fifth, be sure to support our homeboys. Are they doing that at the Dunk Club, the Indian Dome? That's where they usually have themselves.
That chili feed?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's usually where it is.
Check the star, I'm sure they'll tell you where it is. And don't forget, if you need tax help sponsored by United Way, if interested, check the Stewartville Star and I'll schedule a appointment. That's all I've got for tonight. Bill, mayor's, or administration's report?
Yup, reports in your packet, just had like two things quick, we made some good progress with People's Energy, Geotech, and our staff working together, so we think we're on and out on a site that'll be within the city limits. That'll obviously be a huge boost to the industrial park, uh, as well as the whole community, so we'll keep working on, with them on that. And then from a staff perspective, we wanted to second your thoughts on Dave Hildebrandt. He's been a great go-between for our staff and public workers to use, um, we're working with them on Summer Fest and the chambers, so we appreciate that as well.
One I forgot, Bill, we were also recognized at the Chamber banquet for a hundred sixty-five years. And the city's given a hundred sixty-five years of service to the community. So congratulations to all the former, future, and present employees and council members.
That's your doer, thank you.
Carla, you got a report, finance?
I'm just gonna let you guys know, auditors will be on, on the twenty-eighth, uh, and then they'll do things remotely the couple of days after that. Also, Reddy's annual meeting is on March first, and, um, that is out at the event center, it's from eleven-thirty to one. And if any of you are interested. And if any of you are interested in going, we do have availability to go and do that, so just let Bill or I know, and then we'll make sure we get you signed up.
We still got time to sign up for that?
Yep, we still have some time to sign up. I think if you can get, you know, through the end of next week, but the sooner the better.
All right, thank you. Sean, public works director?
Um, two things. I'll just cover the reports in there. The hackery is uh obviously with the weather. Even if it cools off again when it gets this time of year, the sun's direct enough that it's tough to build it back up. Even if it's twenty-seven degrees or something, it's, we can't make ice. Uh, and then the other thing, I see we're starting to make good questions now on the trees we've been taking down along our path by our shop down there. Just if you get asked, it's, they're all emerald ash wood. There's a few box elders, just scrub trees that we knocked with, but ninety-nine percent of them are emerald ash and they're dead. That's why we're taking them down. So.
Thanks a lot. City engineer, Jen?
All right, um, just to keep you updated for the projects that are gonna be coming up, uh, contractors have been sent out to the contractors. I have been reviewing some shop drawings and everything, so we'll get everything set up and ready for reconstruction meetings at some point when, you see the weather's gonna turn. Um, on top of that, we do have the GIS mapping site put together. Um, so working with Sean earlier today on some users and everything, um, we should, we'll be having a training session for staff on using that new GIS site um coming up. And otherwise, with the financing thing, um, we'll hold off for a little bit on the next project, so we know we can afford whatever project we might be going for. But we would like to get started on the feasibility report as soon as we can, so that we can move things into um trying to bid before Christmas.
Well, we still gotta do the feasibility report, so we know what we're gonna question.
Yes, well, we could, yes. Um, although that could prove that then we can't do the project too. But anyway, um, yes, we'd like to get started on one sooner rather than later, put it that way.
Any questions, Randy, here? All right, thank you. Chief, you got a report?
I do. January, we had a total number of sixty-one through calls for service. Forty-seven of those B and GMS calls, fourteen fire-related calls. Um, Engine Three is now in production. Uh, if anybody wants to see updates on that, you can go to the McQueen website, and then you can select the emergency portion of their company. Up in the upper right-hand corner, there's a tab you can follow to see anything that's in production. You select the state of Minnesota, and you'll see, scroll down, you'll see Stewartville's trucks. So every Friday afternoon, they update that with uh photos for the week, uh, how the progress is coming along on the build of the truck. Uh, training. Last month, we did all of our in-house uh annual refreshers, our rate-to-know for the employees, and our armor radio refreshers, and uh in-house um snow build mock accident. Next month, we'll have people going to state fire schools in Austin and Mankato. Um, we will be sending one of our trucks for two of our members to uh get trained in basic pump operations. It was something to help them up and get uh, get our people in to the school, uh, or get into the training. Um, and we're looking forward at, you know, many of our engineers on the department could be retiring, so we're trying to get people spun up and trained ahead of that time, so we're ready for that when that comes up. And the news same would be last night at our business meeting. Myself and Josh Bodine were sworn in as chief and assistant chief. We'll be back filling those off reserved positions after the next month, so. We have a lot of work to do here right off the bat, so.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Any questions for chief? All right. One, two, community commission board reports. Chamber of Commerce. If you look at what we have in there tonight, we got the the recognition of the city for a hundred and sixty-five years, and they have a job for coming up on March first. EDHRA, Minnesota, from December twentieth, we had been done with the home show now. We went through that again up there this year, the Russia Home Show. And I think we're gonna have to take a hard look at that for next year. Didn't, I didn't think it was any better than it was last year myself, but we're fine. Finance? Meeting soon or anything?
Not until the auditors kinda get through pre-ads up and have a rock draft first of all.
Library?
Uh, we don't meet until the first week of March, but we left last night to.
That was the sub community building architects.
Architects.
That was a good meeting. Park board?
Yeah, being called up by the lead next month.
Personnel? Nothing. Fire zone? Nothing. Public safety?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No.
You took a big bite out of Cracker this one time. Public works? Nothing. Ready?
Minutes in your packet, and then they presented their plan uh for the coming year as um we do for our EDA here.
Roll call?
Uh, minutes in your packet, nothing specific for school.
Good mention fifteen thousand or anything?
Uh, that'll be coming up.
Trans advisor committee, not here today?
But there is a meeting on Thursday.
Is there?
Dan will be uh hopefully in attendance there.
Good deal.
You got a notice today, so.
Okay, under communications, you can see the SEMLM minutes and the twenty twenty-three legislative policies. They've been busy, hard at work. They've already passed the nondiscriminatory hairdo act, and UTEEN's got passed. So far, we have a session going. Open mic? Anyone wanting to use the open mic? All right, the city council welcomes and encourages participation with community members. Please keep in mind that comments must be perfect to city business, must adhere to the data privacy rules, so no employee's name may be used. Please do not expect to ask from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to four minutes. Speakers we recognize only once. At this time, we ask anyone that would like to, please step up to the podium and address the council. Give us your name and age. That'll take us to our final motion in the evening. That will look to you. Wait a second.
Something.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?